All right, good evening, welcome to the November 8th, 2022 New Bern Board of Alderman Meeting. The prayer tonight will be given by Alderman Astor.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. I'd like to introduce to you Fire Specialist Three, Ben Davies. Ben, if you would come forward, please. Ben has been with the City of New Bern Fire Department since 2019, and he's also a member of the Technical Rescue Team, and he's going to lead this in prayer tonight.
Thanks, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. If you would bow your heads with me, we'll pray. Heavenly Father, we just come to you tonight, Father. We give you the first few minutes of this meeting to honor you, Lord. We pray that the proceedings tonight, Father God, that your wisdom would just be upon our elected officials, Father God. We understand the burden that it is to carry out those duties, Lord, and so I just pray a special blessing upon them as they carry out those duties, that the decisions they make tonight, Lord, would be anointed with your wisdom, Lord, that they would be just and righteous decisions. And, Father God, we just pray a blessing upon the members of this city, the city that we love, the city that we work for. Father, I pray a special protection prayer for those that are on duty tonight, just watch over and protect all of us, and we thank you for this, and we give you all the glory and all the honor. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you. If you would, please join me in the pledge and apply.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you, Ben. Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Alderman Prill.
Here.
Alderman Royal.
Here.
Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Odom.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman Best.
Present.
Alderman Brinson.
Here.
All right, entertain a motion to approve the agenda if you've had a chance to review those.
So moved.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four. Madam Clerk, we have any petition of citizens?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. It's pleasure of the board.
May I make the motion to approve the consent agenda as is?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Prill.
Alderman Prill.
Yes.
Alderman Royal.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Brinson.
Yes.
Mayor Odom.
Yes. Consent agenda carries. Item number seven, Mr. Hughes' presentation by Eastern Carolina Council of Governments.
Good evening, Mayor and Alderman. At this time, I'd like to introduce David Bone. He is the new Executive Director of the Eastern Carolina Council of Governments. David?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Alder men, Alder women. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to introduce myself and hopefully reintroduce our organization to you and to your community. Just a little bit about myself, I have 20 years of experience in local government as a city and county manager. Most of my career has been in eastern North Carolina. I did spend some time in the west, but I'm very glad to be back here in the east. Started work as Executive Director about six months ago and very excited to be here. Just a little bit about our organization, again, not only for your benefit, but for the benefit of the citizens here, as well as those that may be watching on TV. So, the Eastern Carolina Council is a multi-county local government planning and development organization. We are one of 16 councils of government in the state of North Carolina. We are a conduit between local governments and state and federal partners, and we provide technical assistance to local governments and administer projects and programs which benefit our region's citizens. We focus on regional collaboration and partnerships. We serve a nine-county region. Our mission is to improve the region's quality of life by providing planning, economic development, and senior services to local governments and area residents by maximizing resources and collaborating regionally. Just want to talk about, a little bit about our traditional services. First of all, we have our Area Agency on Aging, that's our largest department. With our AAA, we work with counties and providers to serve and advocate for the senior population in our communities. We also have two rural transportation planning organizations, or RPOs. You have your MPO, your Metropolitan Planning Organization. We have two RPOs for our rural areas in our region. With our RPOs, we develop in cooperation with the Department of Transportation, long-range and local and regional multimodal transportation plans. We provide a forum for participation in the prioritization process for transportation projects, and we provide transportation-related information to our local governments. We also provide economic development planning. ECC is the Federal Economic Development Administration's designated economic development district. That's a mouthful. We have that responsibility and an opportunity, and with that comes an opportunity to develop and implement a comprehensive economic development strategy, or SEDS. Basically, what that is, is a regional plan for economic development. So, we work with our partners in our counties and cities, economic development professionals, to develop this regional concept, this regional plan for economic development in our communities. We're currently working on a five-year update of that plan, and we should have that done by the end of the year. But also with that, you know, we don't provide, you know, we don't go out and recruit industry, but we try to be good partners with our counties and city members in their recruitment process, and as the economic development district for EDA, we're kind of a conduit for EDA to, you know, to get grants for water and sewer infrastructure, and so you've got to have that EDD designation to work with EDA on infrastructure projects. We also provide administrative services. Currently, I'm working with the town of Newport with its town manager search. That's going very well. We also have community planning and planning technical assistance. So, this is a service that we have not had fully staffed for a couple of years, but we're regrowing that capacity right now. Our planning staff has historically advised local governments on current planning issues such as zoning, 160D updates, annexation, ordinance revisions, and related projects. You know, this includes, you know, updating ordinances, minimum housing codes, subdivision, store preservation, and so forth. We've helped out with GIS mapping projects. We have, currently, we've hired a new planner, so we are, again, reestablishing that capacity, and we're currently working on recruiting another planner as well. We also supplement these services with a strategic partner to make sure that we've got, you know, the staffing in place to provide services for our members if needed. So, just want to talk about our traditional, or excuse me, our 90-day plan for action and to reestablishing capacity and outreach to our communities, and so this was part of our 90-day plan for my employment. We're about 180 days now, but just wanted to kind of give you an update where we stand on that. So, the first priority is to establish board and organizational priorities. We've done that. Secondly, build trust relationships and lines of communication. We started doing that with weekly communication with our board. We restarted a monthly newsletter. Hopefully, you're getting that. If not, please let me know, we'll make sure we add you to it. We also started meeting with county managers to get advice and input from them. We have updated bylaws, and part of that includes County Managers Advisory Committee, and so we're getting input from the county managers. But also, we're meeting with the city managers as well. We've had a city and county managers meeting and, you know, getting input from them as far as what we need to do to serve our members. We've also sent out information about grant funding and American Recovery Plan, or ARP, ARPA, grant deployments. We're reaching out to our members and, you know, just like with events like tonight. Third, our next priority is to build staff and organizational capacity to expand services to address member needs. We've gotten a number of grant funding sources that we've, that are helping us with that. We've gotten some ARPA technical assistance through the state of North Carolina and the North Carolina Association of Regional Councils of Government. We've also gotten some additional funding through EDA, some capacity building funds, and so we've also not only hired the senior community planner that I mentioned before, but also a new finance director. So, again, we're getting the funds, we're getting the resources to develop our capacity to serve our communities. Fourth, our next priority was to develop a plan and take action to improve financial sustainability and accountability. So, again, we applied for and received several grants to help us with that, and we're adding more budget and audit information on our website and providing that additional information to our board members, so we've got that transparency and accountability. One of the other funding programs that we've got that I didn't mention before, we have also gotten some funding for disaster recovery technical assistance, so that's helping out as well. So, we've got a number of grant programs that we are using to help serve our members. Our fifth focus is focusing on customer service and accountability. We want to make sure that we're providing value to you, our communities within our region. We're continuing our outreach, we're working with communities on ARPA, technical assistance, and various disaster recovery training and so forth. One of the things that we are taking pride in is, you know, and really focusing on, is listening to our members. One of the things that we talked with the counties about is some concern about documentation process, flow of work, and so we tried to simplify that, and that's been very well received in our Area Agency on Aging. We're focusing on solutions and bringing people together, bringing our partners to the table. Our next focus area is to seek out opportunities to help facilitate regional collaboration and provide regional leadership. We're working with the School of Government on several initiatives. We've helped host trainings in our region. That's one of the things that we're really hearing from our members is that what the value that ECC has brought in the past is to host these trainings locally, regionally, so that your staff, your officials, don't have to go to Raleigh or Chapel Hill or Charlotte to get the information, that they can do it locally and not have that travel expense and that time away from their home. So, we are trying to take every opportunity to bring training to our region. We assisted with My Feature NC in some regional educational attainment initiatives. We're continuing with that along with NC Impact and a Town Hall of End at ECU, that focused on economic development in our region. We worked successfully with the Eastern Carolina Workforce Development Board on a new initiative for workforce development leadership training. That is, we've got a cohort that's participating to develop and grow our capacity for workforce development in the region, and I've been blessed to be asked to be a part of that, and so, you know, I'm getting workforce development training individually as well. So, additional efforts with the School of Government. We hosted, co-hosted a human trafficking training on September 9th, and next week, we're working with the School of Government on hosting a water and wastewater operations training in our region as well. So, that's going to be a hybrid event. Folks can go to Chapel Hill, or they can come to our office and participate there as well. Our seventh party is just to, you know, tell our story and to tell your story as well. You know, I think there are so many times that we're focused on the day-to-day operations and, you know, the next emergency, that we don't focus and celebrate the successes that we have, and so we want to make sure that we are not only telling our story, telling our narrative, but yours as well, through our weekly communication with our board members, with our monthly newsletter, through our website, Facebook, and LinkedIn as well. Some of our current projects and initiatives, we've had, again, expansion of our community planning staff and services, ARP technical assistance, and, you know, I'm sure in New Bern, you've already got a good plan and you've probably spent most of your ARP funds already, but there are a lot of towns that have not yet, that have not spent the first dime, and so we just want to help them make sure that they're following the rules and regulations and doing things, you know, the right way, you know, for the benefit of their community, and so that's a big need, and so we're happy to fill that need. One of the things I do want to mention with our Area Agency on Aging, I know, you know, you may not deal with senior services, but this is something that can benefit all the residents that are seniors in your community. We have a grocery assistance program that was started on a pilot program in a couple of communities, but we've now, as of November 1st, expanded that to all counties in our region, and with that grocery assistance program, all seniors are eligible for $500 in reimbursement for groceries. So, as long, you know, they can't buy certain things with it, they can't duplicate, you know, other programs, but they can apply for this program, and, you know, we have information on our website, we're glad to share that with you, so you can share that on your social media as well, but all they got to do is apply for that, that program, send in their receipts, and we'll give them the reimbursements. So, $500 per household, just as a one-time expense. We're thinking about, we're trying to evaluate opportunities if we want to make that a multi-year program, but for now, it's just a one-time. Yes, ma'am?
Is that based on income?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
So, all seniors are eligible. Next, our Conference of Economic Development Strategy. Again, that's something that we update every year, but every five years, it's a major update, and so we're currently in that process now. Our RPOs, just like your MPO, working on the State Transportation Improvement Plan. We've got a lot of really good information on our RPO webpages, and again, even though, you know, you are in the MPO, I certainly encourage you to look at our RPO websites. We've got a lot of good information on that. And again, I mentioned the upcoming training opportunity that we have next week. So, just for our vision and our path forward, you know, we want to focus on customer service to you, to our communities, to our members. We want to create value for you. We want to be your trusted partner. There are a lot of great resources out there, School of Government, Local Government Commission, so forth, for local governments in North Carolina. I don't think there are a lot of citizens that may know about all the great resources that we do have, and those are great resources, but we want to be your trusted partner so that, you know, you can feel confident to call us if you've got a question, and we may not have the answer, but we'll find it for you. Next, you know, again, we're focusing on expanding our planning staff, expanding our planning services, and expanding grant writing opportunities. Just like with the training, that's one of the things that we hear from all of our members, that we need more capacity to help our communities apply for grants, and so we are growing that capacity within our planning staff. It would be great if we could at some point have enough work and enough funding to provide that, you know, that grant service through a dedicated grant writer, but right now, we don't have a dedicated grant writer. We're working with our planning staff, and, you know, they're doing multiple tasks right now. So, that's kind of our vision moving forward. We, you know, New Bern has been a great partner and member in the past, and we'd love to have you back at ECC as a member.
Just for the benefit of the new board members, I don't know exactly when it was, but the board decided to-
Last December.
Last December, so about a year ago, we decided to exit this group, and I'm sure you could share with us some of the stories of the things that you waltzed into that you had to fix, but that was one of the reasons that the board decided to no longer participate, and also, and it may be your benefit, if you wanted to maybe follow up with us in the coming days with what things you provide that's not a duplication of what we have already. So, for example, all the planning staff, we obviously have our own planning department, so what you do is very helpful for those rural-type communities that don't have that.
Sure.
But the fact that we do, so I think what would really be helpful as we deliberate and we think about next budget year is to provide us with some things that you could do to help New Bern specifically. I think that would be helpful in the discussion, so.
Definitely, we'll be glad to do that, sir, and, you know, just in addition to that, you know, we are stronger as a group, you know, coming together, and, you know, ECC can be that opportunity for regional collaboration. You know, I think that's one of the biggest benefits that we can provide.
Board, do you have questions? All right, well, we thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Have a great night. Moving on to item number eight, we've got a presentation on Reefs Across America.
Mayor, at this time, I'd like to ask Kevin Yates to come forward.
Thank you, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, Alder men, Alder women. My name is Kevin Yates. I am the location coordinator for Reefs Across America here at the New Bern National Cemetery. Many of you know about the program and know me personally, but for those of you that have not had a flash of me yet, I prepared this to kind of brief the program and what it does for the National Cemetery in New Bern, Eastern North Carolina, et cetera. At the local level, this is an entirely volunteer program. I have a regular nine-to-five, just like all of you do. I retired from the Marine Corps. I did 20 years. Many of that was here at Cherry Point, and my children grew up here. I've been a citizen of Craven County in New Bern since 2005. I got involved with Reefs Across America in 2014. It originally started coming here to New Bern in 2011. It now participates in over 3,000 cemeteries across the country. In the New Bern National Cemetery, there are 6,773 headstones. It was built February 1st and, or dedicated February 1st, 1867, right after the Civil War. Many of those that are interred there were transferred from smaller battle sites all over eastern North Carolina. Officially, it is now closed for interments, although it does occasionally happen, particularly with spouses and family members are still interred there actively, and there are over 1,000 unknowns from the Civil War all the way up to World War II, and it does contain several mass graves. It is one of the largest national cemeteries here in North Carolina by the number of headstones. So, by the number of interments, it is not, because the cemetery in Salisbury has many large mass graves, but as far as the number of headstones go, it is one of the larger ones. A little bit about the program, it, every wreath has to be sponsored to be placed there. So, we work all year long fundraising, coordinating, planning, in order to come together here at the last part of the year and honor the sacrifices and services, service that was made, and remembering our veterans that are interred here. And so, each wreath costs $15. It is a live wreath that comes from Maine. It'll be transported and delivered here. Many of the challenges that we have are like many other programs that we have out there, one being the age of our cemetery. There's a disconnect between those that are living today and somebody that is in fact interred within the cemetery. Military, a lot of us are transplants. We don't have a direct family connection here. The retirement community that moves here, again, doesn't have somebody that's directly connected to the cemetery, and then, like I mentioned earlier, over 1,000 unknowns. So, those are challenges that we face every year in making sure that we place a wreath on every headstone. Here is a few pictures that we have of the actual ceremony, so if you haven't come out there and participated prior, I highly encourage you to do that on Saturday, December 17th. We'll be out there. It draws a huge crowd. On average, we get 500 to 600 volunteers every year that come out and help us place wreaths on the headstones. Regardless, rain, shine, COVID, we've been through it all at this point, so I highly encourage you to participate. There's so much more to it than just wreaths. I get asked that question all the time, well, what are you doing about living veterans? What are you doing about helping people that are struggling now? It's so much more than that. The Reefs Across America motto is remember, honor, teach. Remembering the sacrifices made, honoring our veterans, but then also teaching the next generation to continue to, continue on with that. So, when you come out and you visit the cemetery, you'll see that. It's from every generation, from our veterans that are coming out there and need assistance just to walk down the aisles, to young children that will be out there also participating. Since 2018, we have added several things to the event to try and make it a little bit more than just coming out and placing a wreath on the headstone. And so, we started a truck escort. This picture here was the first year that we did it, incorporating our local law enforcement agencies, New Bern Police Department, and Craven County Sheriff's Office, but also the New Bern Fire Department, and then local motorcycle organizations that wanted to come out, and we escort the trucks into New Bern, into the cemetery, and then our volunteers were there to help unload the trucks. It has continued to grow since then, and Chief Boyd does a great job of getting the firemen involved. They have this apparatus that they hang the national ensign out over Broadway, or Broad Street there, and the trucks come right down and go underneath the flag, and it's a really big experience. We get the local media to come out there. We've had the city drone come out and take pictures. It's a really neat experience, as we've tried to make the program a little bit bigger each year. You can kind of see in this picture here, Pepsi is one of our big supporters, and they provide truck to carry the wreath down, and obviously, being New Bern, Pepsi wants to be involved in that. And then that red truck there is Hart Transportation. It's an interesting connection, but Hart Transportation is a small trucking company out of Maine, which is where the wreaths come anyways, but they also pick up appliances at Bosch, so they have a connection to New Bern also. So, Hart Transportation volunteers every year to bring our wreaths to us, and we've developed that relationship with them to where now they call us and they say, hey, when do you want your wreaths? And then they kind of work for us at that point. So, we will plan this year on December 15th for the wreath to arrive at 8:00, and we'll hopefully do another escort just like this. We get the trucks right into the cemetery. If you've been over there before, the gates were built in like 1932, I believe, and it's about a 10-foot wide opening, and these professional truck drivers back these big, huge trucks right up in there and drop off our wreaths. It's pretty amazing, but they do it every year. Placing the wreaths, so this is obviously what it's all about, right? Going out there and putting wreaths on the headstones. We have a very brief ceremony that we conduct at the beginning, and then we just open it up, and we let the family members that have interments, or family members that are interred there go first, and then we open it up to the rest of the volunteers that go out and place the wreaths, and we get a huge group of people, like set 500 to 600 people every year, that come out, and it's an incredible sight, watching the people go out there and work systematically and place the wreaths out on the headstones. This was during COVID 2020, obviously, even though we could not have a large ceremony and Cherry Point would not allow the Marines to come down and have a big color guard, they did send this small detachment, and we were still able to have, let the active-duty military come out and pay their respects also. Again, some more pictures of the cemetery, if you haven't been out there to see it. And it really is an incredible contrast, because now, not so much because of, it's been a warm year, but next month, hopefully, or probably, the grass will have transitioned over, and then all of a sudden, you have this pop-up color with the greens and the reds, and so it's a very beautiful sight to see the cemetery once it is filled with wreaths. Then, we've added retiring the wreaths. So, obviously, in January, the National Cemetery, we'd like to have their cemetery back, and so we have to go out there and pick the wreaths up and retire them and remove them from the cemetery, so we, again, ask our volunteers to come out, and they show up. We get several hundred for that also. It's not as much circumstance, but they show up and they pick up all the wreaths and we retire them. And, again, it has to be done. We get a huge turnout, we'll make it happen. All kinds of folks show up. So, why am I here tonight? We cannot make this program work without the support of the City of New Bern, and so we need help from the police department and the fire department conducting an escort, and then awareness that on December 17th, we'll be having an event out there with 500 to 600 people in case something were to happen. I don't need necessarily folks there dedicated, just awareness that if it happens, that way they could respond appropriately. From Parks and Recreation, we've asked for buses, because due to the age of the cemetery, there is no parking. It's very limited, but graciously, the former Ruth Chapel Church at Oaks Road and Simmons Street, they allow us to use their cemetery, or their parking lot, excuse me, and then we use the Parks and Recreation buses to transport people from the church to the cemetery and back. And then in January, when we go to do the cleanup, we just need a couple dumpsters to be able to retire the wreaths and clean up the cemetery. So, that's what we're here for, that's what I'm asking, if I could get the support of the city and make this event happen. It is a very valuable service that we provide, and I think it is a very worthwhile effort, and so I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Kevin, do you know how much money you raised Friday night?
Right at $1,000, just over $900, and it was a great turnout. Suppose it was the best hot hamburger plate fundraiser that they had this year, so.
That's a good hot hamburger.
We'll hang that one up there, so.
Board, do you have questions?
We just need to give the city manager directions.
I think-
I think so. It was something we've done historically now for many, many years. If no one's opposed, then we would just continue to do what we typically do for the event.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Item number nine, consider adopting a resolution for the sole source purchase of fencing from Coastal Fence Company for the Riverwalk Fence Replacement Project. This time I'd like to ask Mr. Warren to come make this presentation.
Okay, so back in 2020, we replaced some of the fencing along the Riverwalk and Union Point Park from the footbridge up towards the convention center by the Grand Marina docks. And now we're gonna, been given the opportunity to use ARPA funds to replace the remainder of that fencing from the convention center along the Grand Marina, behind the Riverwalk where it goes by Sky Sale, on up towards Hancock Street. And so in order to do that, we're requesting to use the sole source vendor to purchase the fencing. It is one-of-a-kind fencing, and in order for us to continue with what we already put in, we need to purchase the fence from a local vendor who is the only one that distributes it in our area. So we're requesting to be able to use the sole source vendor for the purchase of the fencing and install.
Board, have questions?
Carrie, when would the project be done?
When will it be done?
When would, when would the, the remainder of the fence be started and completed?
Once we have the fundings in place and we can schedule for coastal fencing to come out. We've already received quotes from them on what the cost would be, so at this point, we're just looking to get the funding in place.
So in order, it would be approximately six, six weeks before the fencing would be in place, and, and they could actually have that installed within about two weeks after that.
So I assume we're waiting until after the holiday festivities?
Yes, it would, it wouldn't take place until after Christmas.
I just have one question. I saw that it appears they want like a 50% deposit, and then the balance is due upon the work being completed. Is that, is that normal?
We, we see that for certain orders where, where the product has to be ordered in advance. We do see that from certain vendors.
So I assume we have some protection in place if we give them 50%, and this product is no longer available, we can get our money back, right?
That's correct.
It's a pleasure to board on item number nine.
Mayor, I'd like to move for the approval of a resolution for the sole source purchase of fencing for this project.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I have a roll call starting with Alderman Royal.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number 10, consider adopting a resolution to declare property located at 304 and 308 South Front Street as surplus and establish a minimum bid. Mr. Hughes.
So Mayor, we were previously given direction by this board to put the, the two lots that we normally call Talbot's Lots up for sale, and at the board retreat on November 3rd, we discussed the minimum price to be set on the, those parcels, and that price is $750,000. We do have a resolution that will officially deem those properties as surplus and make them available to the public through the upset bid process and establish a minimum bid of $750,000.
Mr. Davis, could you, for the benefit of the board, if we were to get a bid at this minimum bid, then the board would then entertain whether or not we wanted to accept the bid, and then that would start the upset bid process, correct?
Yes, sir, exactly. And even at the end of the upset bid process, it would come back to you to then decide if you want to accept the highest bid or not. You're always free to stop the process, even at the very end.
And the increment that's required for each upset?
5%, I believe, by the statute.
Okay. Board, have questions or comments? You can make that a motion.
Mayor, I would, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution to declare a property located at 304 38 South Front Street as surplus and establish a minimum bid of $750,000 for the two parcels.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? If not, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Y'all are getting pretty good at that.
I know.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
No.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Number 11, appointments. Alderman Pril, do you have any appointments?
No, I don't.
Alderman Royal?
No.
Alderman Astor?
None at all.
Alderman Kinsey?
No, sir.
Alderman Best?
Yes, I have two appointments tonight for the Board of Adjustment. We all know our resident citizen of New Bern, Mr. Mike Duffy. He expressed an eager desire to serve on the Board of Adjustment. Do I need to do these separate, Attorney Davis?
Yes, ma'am, that would help.
So I'd like to make the motion to appoint Mr. Mike Duffy, which is a resident of the city, to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And my second appointment is a young lady, Ms. Kathleen Marty. I spoke with her, and she was also very eager to serve on, as an alternate on the Board of Adjustment, and she too is a city resident. So I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ms. Kathleen Marty to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate seat.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anymore? Alderman Brinson?
None tonight.
Attorneys report?
Nothing to report, ma'am.
City managers report?
Just a few things, Mayor. As you're aware, we're having northeastern winds that are creating a lot of water to come up the noose, which has resulted in flooding definitely along the waterfront areas. We've had to close up some streets. You may have seen the New Bern alerts posted have gone out. We're going to continue to monitor that. Union Point Park is closed, and there are portions of Lawson Creek Park that are currently closed. So as Nicole comes up, that, we could see different impacts from that, and so staff is working to monitor. They are expecting winds of 30-plus miles per hour over the next several days, so staff is, is prepared to respond as needed. Do want to also remind everyone that the Capitol Christmas tree will be in New Bern on Saturday at 1:00 PM. The, that site was originally scheduled for Union Point Park at 1:00 PM. We may have to change that location, but we're going to see what happens over the next few days before a decision is made, so we'll make sure the board, as well as the public, is aware. So if, if it changed that, that location could go to Lawson Creek Park, but an official announcement will go out at that time. That's all I have.
All right. We'll go to new business, starting with Alderman Brinson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just a reminder that tomorrow, from 10:00 to 1:00 PM, the Craven County Veterans Stand Down will be at the National Guard Armory and on Glenbernie Drive. It's sponsored by the Veterans Organic Garden and the NC Works, and to support homeless veterans and veterans in need with free services and with food. Again, that's 10:00 to 1:00 tomorrow at the National Guard Armory. And then just as a reminder also, November 11th, on Veterans Day, the Craven County Veterans Council is hosting a veterans luncheon at Temple Baptist Church. The doors are going to open at 11:00 with a ceremony, and there'll be a free lunch for the first 250 veterans. It'll be Moore's Barbecue, if you're interested. And then they will also present Veteran of the Year Award and the Veteran Lifetime Achievement Award at that time.
All right. Alderman Best?
Yes. Mr. Hughes, could you give me a little brief update on the elevator? I tell you, I, I just look out there in the audience, and I don't see our faithful, dedicated leader of this city that's been so instrumental in, in city government for longer than I am old, is Ms. Ethel Sampson. Do you not give me an update of when, how is it progressing, and when do you anticipate on it being a, a grand slam and we can have that celebration?
Yes, ma'am. We had our monthly progress meeting with the contractor this morning. They're currently standing 50% complete on this project. So what they have done is they have it temporarily dried in. They're looking at having their roofing materials come in for the tint, for the permanent roof. They have started, they've, they've got concrete floors on all levels. They're starting to do some roughing work where the restrooms and things like that are going to be, and where the walls are going to be. The precast material and the bricks are going to be coming in the next few weeks, and then you're going to start seeing the new skin on the building, which will mirror City Hall. Once the building is fully dried in, they will start putting in the drywall and things like that, so we'll see how that looks. It should be very nice. The projected completion date is still May of 2023, and so as we get closer, we will be announcing a grand opening, and we're looking forward to it, but progress is moving.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's all I have, sir.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes, sir. It's something I want to put to rest tonight. There's been some false accusation about where I live. I live in the city of New Bern. I live in the fourth ward. That's where I reside. No one has come to me to ask me anything. It's just been negative information going on, but that's where I live. I do live in the city.
Okay.
In my ward. That's where I live.
Anything else?
Nothing else, sir.
All right. Alderman Astor?
Yes, sir, I don't have anything, but I do want to apologize for that outburst of my telephone earlier. Ironically, I was trying to silence my phone or make sure it was on silence, and big thumbs hit the wrong button evidently, but other than that, I don't have anything, sir.
You've got a green key that can show you how to use that thing. All right. Alderman Royal?
Yes, sir. I would like to bring up one issue. I, I know that as city government and city leaders, we've experienced a lot in the past, and one of the things that the community expressed was about the division. And in light of that, I would like to make a suggestion that probably would bring some solidarity to the board, and that is if we could do a float together during the Christmas parade without interfering with that quote, that, what is it?
Quorum.
Quorum, thank you. Thank you. That was the word I was looking for. But I'd like to pose that to us to see if the, the interest is there and to see how we can actually pull that off.
Okay. That's a great idea. We'll maybe have the clerk circulate around and see who's available for the day of the parade, and then once we find out who wants to participate, we'll start working on some logistics on how to pull that off.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
That off?
Sir, are you willing to have this during the time of the Christmas parade, or is this going to be maybe later on during the Christmas holidays, like closer to Christmas? I mean. Parade. To the parade, okay. Yes, and the mayor has already volunteered to work it out and get the float, the truck, and all the tools that are necessary. Is that right, ma'am?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else?
Thank you.
All right, very good. Alderman Pril?
One item, just a review with the board. As everyone knows, the city has been working for some time now to get the, the Tisdale House moved off of the Stanley White Recreation Center property to a new location, so that when the, the Stanley White Center project gets started, there won't be an impediment in the way with regards to this house still sitting on the property. Where that project is at right now, proposals were received by the New Bern Preservation Foundation. They've been reviewing those proposals. They've determined that there are two proposals that they feel have been submitted by individuals who have the means to successfully move the house to a new location. I don't know if you recall the, the requirements or the conditions that were placed on anyone that wanted to potentially submit a proposal. One of those conditions involved that the proposal had to demonstrate that the proponent had control over a lot where the house would be moved to. The two proposals that the Preservation Foundation feel are potentially viable, both individuals have identified lots, but they, they were not necessarily in control of those lots. Also, during the kind of intervening timeframe, there was another avenue being pursued by the city, that being that the city would provide or could provide a lot for the house to be moved to, and then let the Preservation Foundation work with the entity that they felt was the most likely to be able to succeed with this project. I raised a question, and I just want to bring it to the board's attention. I've, I've discussed this with the city manager and the city attorney, and they suggested that I just bring it up to the board to see if anybody else may have a concern that I've raised, that being that the, the city advertised certain terms and conditions that, that needed to be met. But one of those, that being the entity had to be in control of a lot, that's been changed or modified from the applicant presenting a lot to, the city now has made a lot available. I raised the concern that because that's a, what I felt was a significant enough change, that we might need to step back and re-advertise the process to make sure that there aren't any other entities out there who wanted to submit a proposal but chose not to because they did not have a lot that they had control of. But given that the city is providing a lot, then they might be interested. So I'm just, I'm raising that as a potential concern, and whether or not the board shares in that concern, or whether you feel that that modification is not significant enough to require the process to, if you will, start over again. So again, it's, it's a concern I'm raising. It's a procedural question more than anything, and I'm just raising it to make the, the rest of the board aware of that concern.
Thank you, thank you, Alderman Pril. Mr. Attorney or manager, could you clarify? I want to be clear, I don't think the city was going to provide a lot. We were offering one that could be purchased for this, correct?
Well, even more subtle than that, Alderman Pril gave a great summary of, of the process. The detour was that late in that process, the Preservation Foundation, despite the other parties having identified some lots, preferred that the city subdivide the lot on Rem Street. That was a preference from the Preservation Foundation, and that's what caused the board to pivot to then try to accommodate the Preservation Foundation. Legally, what the city would be doing, if you proceed, is selling the lot to the Preservation Foundation. The reason you would do that is that is the only local entity that allows the city to sell the property for fair market value while putting restrictions on the property that require the house to be constructed there and forever maintained on that property in its historic condition. So legally, we are always going to convey... So legally, we are always going to convey the house and/or the lot to the Preservation Foundation. The advertisement process was to drum up interest so that applicants could then approach the Preservation Foundation with their hopes, dreams, and ideas and resources to rehab the house. Alderman Prill raises a good point and it's more of a political point and a fairness point, was that initial advertisement drawn too narrow given the current facts? At the time, that's exactly what the board wanted to do, but the vision has now broadened to include a lot that was not in play at that time. So I'm comfortable on the legal side that procedurally, we're going to be conveying that lot to the Preservation Foundation. However, politically, as a matter of fairness, do you feel that your constituents and anybody else had fair notice that there's a different deal? And, and I don't know the answer to that question and I think that's why Alderman Prill is raising it to you and that we don't want someone to have regrets that they missed out on an opportunity when they were the right person for the job and simply didn't know that the game had changed late in the process.
So, sorry, just, I want to ask Alderman Prill, so you're saying that folks who expressed interest were required to have sight control of where to move the house and now somebody that may have had interest but didn't have sight control, now there's an opportunity for them to get in the game, if you will, because there's a lot available, is that...
Essentially, that, that's the point that I'm making, yes.
And, and Mayor, excuse me, one thought. This contract is proposed to be on the next agenda for the Preservation Foundation. So there is a couple of weeks, so there is an opportunity if the board wanted to advertise something, there's at least several weeks to get that word out. If we want to keep the offer to purchase on the agenda for the next board meeting to the Preservation Foundation.
But either way, based off of what you said, this house has to go to the Preservation Foundation?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
If we want restrictions on the, on the property, I suspect you do.
Are you aware, Mr. City Manager, of where they're at with this? Do you, do they have someone that's seriously interested in it and is the process moving forward?
I think we've got George Bray here with the Preservation Foundation, he could probably update you on where things stand on their end. Board, do you want to allow him to speak? Or is anyone else with the Preservation Foundation?
I don't know, George, you're out of the speaker.
Okay.
Can we get him up? I'd like to make a motion to allow him to speak.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
So I'm Dan Tower, I've lived here for three years and when the house was advertised, I started talking with George about what we could do to move the house, preserve the house. I've done countless historic renovations, I own a house in Raleigh that's just like this subject house, almost identical, a Southern Colonial style house. You know, the house is built in the same style as, say, the President's House of Carolina and others and so George and I went through a process and initially, I didn't have a place to move the house to. So I went through a process of actually buying a lot from the city on Chautauqua, which is maybe three quarters of a mile down the street, had the contractor that had done the Hatteras Lighthouse and other projects, look at it to see, is it feasible, how can we do it? And we determined that we could do it, but the Preservation Foundation really didn't want to do that. They really felt like the house, which is a very, you know, I've been in the house, it's a really significant historic building and it's, in my mind, very important that it be preserved, it's, you know, a part of New Bern history and, you know, George said he'd really like to see it in downtown or in the historic district and he had been talking with the prior council about the idea of moving it over to Rem Street where it would sort of sit very nicely with the other houses that are on that street. I think initially when he brought it up, the council or the city or whoever it was that was looking at it was sort of backing off of it, it wasn't certain that that was the right decision at that time. So I went, there was only one other piece of property where it could be moved to that was sort of suitable, it was on the corner of New Street and Burn Street here in the historic district. So, you know, I, I sort of said to George, I agree with you that it shouldn't be moved to Green Park, it wasn't an ideal location to put the house, but it was just sort of, this is a place that we can find. So I actually followed through with the purchase of buying that lot just in case something goes wrong and in my mind, the most important thing or a very important thing is that the house be saved. But I agree with the Preservation Foundation that that's not really the right place to move it to, but I still just sort of, you know, I had started that process, so I finished that process and purchased that property from the city for that contingency. But, but based on the Preservation Society and, and George's recommendation, I went out and signed a contract to purchase this other larger lot, which is just here on Broad Street, like I say, the corner of Burn and New Street. I, I don't think that was really that great a location for it either because it's, you know, it's not on Broad Street, it's not in a prominent location, it's sort of tucked away, but it was a lot that was big enough to put it there and it was in the historic district and I felt like that was a better location for it. You know, the idea is to put it in a place where it's congruent with the other houses so that it kind of prominently sits there. And so I actually put that under contract and was moving forward to purchase that, to move it, when George called me and said, the city has reconsidered, they now want to put it in Rem Street, which is where we really want to see it go and, you know, that's our preference. So then I stopped for purchasing this other lot to put it there because what I was hearing was this is really, you know, the best place for it. I do think that this subject lot is a great place for it because it sort of preserves some of the prominence of the structure and, you know, it also will really sit there nicely on Rem Avenue, it's congruent with the other houses, all this and that. You know, I've been sort of sitting here on go with, you know, I've spent money on other lots, I've got the money appropriated to move it, I wish George was here to talk to you about it, but I, I made it clear to him that, you know, I have the ability to do it, I have the money to do it, I'm ready to do it. When we first started talking about it, they were saying it needed to be moved in order to be saved by the end of September and so I was sort of trying to meet that deadline and trying to keep my contractor in line and talking with the city manager a couple of weeks ago, I said basically, you know, I'm ready to do this and move this house, I've got the contractor lined up to move it, I've got the people lined up to put the foundation under it, to preserve it, to get it done, but I can't do anything until I'm given, you know, until, you know, somebody says, go ahead and do it and at that point, you know, I'm ready to sort of move quickly to get it moved. So I don't know what the timetable is as far as the stuff with the recreation center and how quickly, you know, when it was initially presented to me, it was like, we really got to move this house now because we have these other plans, but I'm sure there's other people here who can speak to that, but I, I just want to make sure you guys had, you know, all of the information, the process that we've been through, you know, this has been, I think, five or six months or so.
Okay.
I'm happy to answer any questions any of you may have.
Are you a member of the Preservation Foundation?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
So I moved to New Bern three years ago. I'm a construction and real estate and corporate attorney originally. But I've always done a lot of historic preservation, numerous projects, I own a lot of historic houses, I've renovated them many times and, you know, I come at it from the perspective always of really wanting to preserve the elements and doing the other things and, you know, it's something that I think is important. I think this house in particular, if anybody's been inside of it to see it, it's a beautiful house, it's got beautiful features and it's something that, you know, when I move it, it's going to be given a new lease on life, it's going to have, you know, new systems put in, put in it, significant renovation, I've got the money to do it, I'm not getting any bank financing and, you know, so it's a project I'm eager to do, but certainly I understand that, you know, there's competing concerns and other things, but I just want you guys to sort of have the benefit of what the process has been and, you know, what's been discussed and all that.
Board, you have questions?
Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
I'm a little confused here. Attorney Davis, can you put some light on, on this for me? Is this, I don't remember, I, I can't remember that we made the decision that that house would go on Rem Avenue this board, a private board? When was that decision made?
I, I couldn't tell you at the meeting it was made, but staff was given direction to, to proceed with the subdivision of that property and to proceed with the, the new vision for the new location and I just couldn't tell you what meeting it was specifically.
When you say staff, you mean employees or you mean board?
No ma'am, the board, we take direction from you, so it would have been board direction to the city manager to proceed with the subdivision.
That the New Bern Preservation Foundation would own this house and that we put, we put on Rem Avenue?
Well...
Or a buyer would own this house and put on Rem Avenue?
Yes ma'am, the, 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 the foundation was always the conduit to get it into private hands, but the Rem Lot was an adjustment that was made late in the game and this gentleman gave a great summary as to the hows and the whys. The other alternate options were just not as good a fit as the Rem Lot will be.
So, Council, let me, let me get this straight. We sell the lot to the New Bern Preservation Society, correct?
Yes sir.
And then they turn around, if this gentleman so desires, he moves the, buys the lot from them?
Right.
And he moves this house on that lot and basically the city's out of it with the exception of we sell the lot.
Yes sir, what's going to happen on your next agenda if we move forward is that we'll have a, a, a real estate contract with the Preservation Foundation and it's going to say that they will pay the city X for the lot and they'll get a bill of sale for the Tisdale House and that contract is going to provide that they have X number of days to move their house over to that lot and when we close on that with the foundation, they'll get a deed, but there will also be preservation restrictions placed on that lot that will apply to the property and the house so that it will have to be maintained and preserved. Now, our contracts with the Preservation Foundation, those obligations will pass to whatever buyer they choose.
Okay. And do you know how many buyers are interested other than this gentleman?
I do not know.
So I had a conversation with, with George Bray today and he told me he was going to be here this evening because we talked about the concerns that Alderman Prill had and what, what we were aware of is that they had originally had about eight to ten parties that were interested in the house and there were two serious contenders for it that...
Were those eight or ten under these current guidelines?
That's correct.
With the city, okay, with the Rem Street, is it Rem Street, Rem Avenue, Rem Avenue?
No, that was, that was the original. That, we have not gone back to re-advertise any information about the Rem.
But we're not, I mean, we're giving the house away basically, right? I mean...
Giving the house away, selling the lot at fair market value.
Okay. So as of the next meeting, when we take care of the necessary paperwork for that, how long will it be before they would actually be able to advertise the property and, and the house, I mean, can, if this gentleman wanted to, how quickly could he start his work process?
Well, once you sign the contract, once the city is in the contract at the next meeting, it's a matter of a week or two until we can have the closing and then the Preservation Foundation will be bound to live up to its obligations under the contract.
Okay. Sounds like, sounds like it's in the works then, right?
Yes sir, and all this is a long way of coming around to Alderman Prill's concern that the rules of the game got modified in the ninth inning and, and that's a political worry that it wasn't a full and robust notice to other people. Legally, it's going to the Preservation Foundation, so that's not a legal worry to me, it's, it's more of a notice and political concern to you, having heard the full story now. And I think what the city manager is saying, that the Preservation Foundation would say they have interviewed and vetted a great many people and they've identified they, who they think is the most responsible person to do this job. But Alderman Prill is raising the question, are there others that didn't have the benefit of these facts?
Would it be appropriate for the Preservation Society to, to make contact back with these others and to say, has there been a slight change in the rules and see if they become interested at that point?
They could definitely do that. I, I, my, my impression, I, I wish they were here to speak for themselves, my impression is that they were looking for expertise and resources and, and I think that the cream came to the top in their, in their minds already.
Okay. So what do you reckon with that?
If, if you're concerned about fair notice, like I said, there is time, there is time to put, the notices that we're giving are to benefit the Preservation Foundation and make their job easier, right? So, so we are not following a legal process to solicit specific bids between the city and a potential buyer, we're just trying to generate interest to get as many qualified people to the Preservation Foundation as possible so that they can vet them and, and decide who's the best fit for them because they're going to have the burden of carrying out our contract. So the advertising we're doing is to help them and, and there is time, if, if we are worried, to put an ad in the paper again, online and, and let it run for a few weeks to help the Preservation Foundation find more people if that's a worry.
Well, it's going to be two weeks before we have the contract ready anyway and, and then, so, and closing and all that can take place.
Alderman Prill, what, what did you have in mind as far as what you think we should do to address this issue?
I, I wasn't really coming at it from the standpoint that the city needed to do or take any additional action. My concern was primarily whether or not we might be inadvertently setting ourselves up for somebody coming in potentially with a legal challenge after everything has already been consummated and where does that leave us? Not that it would happen, I may be overthinking it, it's just a concern that I had based on the fact that we, we modified one, one of the terms, if you will, of the original advertisement and, and that, I'm just raising a concern.
Sure.
Mr. Davis indicates that it, it's not a legal process that we're following, I mean, anybody can sue us for anything, so, you know, if it happens, it happens. I'm, I'm not trying to stop the project, I think that the Preservation Foundation will do an excellent job of being a steward of this, this process to get the house moved, to get it rehabilitated and to give it new life. They, they've done it for forty years, I have no reason to believe that they won't do it again. So, you know, I, I certainly support the project, I, I just felt a little uncomfortable about this one procedural aspect of it and wanted to bring it to the board's attention.
Mr. Davis, would, would it make sense for the board or the city to just re-advertise the same method that we did the first time with this notice and they should be contacting the Historic Preservation Commission and not us?
I'm going to defer to the clerk, my recollection was that the contacts come to you first and then you forwarded them to the Preservation Foundation?
Yes.
I, I would do the same, if it's a worry, I would run it again for a week to ten days and again, just, just in the spirit of, of, of being transparent and offering a fair deal. For those of you on the prior board, this has been a long slog for all of us and, you know, this is the second or third go-around, which, which... And, you know, this is the second or third go-around, which does reduce my concerns that everyone's had a fair crack at it. But it's an easy thing to run that notice, and better safe than sorry.
Would that be satisfactory to you?
That would be fine.
And ultimately, the Preservation Foundation has the final say as to who they want to deal with.
Do you want a motion or just direction?
Direction's fine.
Anybody opposed to just rerunning one more time? Okay.
Ten-day period.
As long as it doesn't interfere with the next meeting so we can get the contract moved forward?
Yes, sir. Understood.
Anything else?
Nope, that's all.
All right. Colleen, I sent her a picture. Everybody knows my affection towards signs. Both, I love them and I hate them. And I want to share just one picture with you. And I actually received an email yesterday from a concerned citizen. So, Mr. Davis, this is on a city right-of-way, even though they're political and some non-political. Are any of those signs placed legally, according to our ordinance?
Well, Mayor, they've got to be outside of the ordinance with the permission of the landowner.
Okay.
Outside of the public right-of-way.
Right. So every one of these signs are in the public right-of-way? And they're all illegal. And if, I don't know how many of you have noticed, but we've become a billboard city. At almost every intersection you get to, there's a banner, there's a sign, there's something there. I don't expect us to do anything about it tonight. I just want to put on your radar. But to me, I think that we need to address this somehow because I understand what happens during political campaigns. But you can see out of all those, only two of them are political signs. The rest of them are advertisements for private businesses. So I think it might be one of those work session topics that we have in the future to get everybody up to speed on what our ordinance is regarding signs. And this is just one picture of many. Almost every intersection you get to in New Bern, I saw one today that was handwritten and has puppies for sale. So they're everywhere.
One handwritten about mattresses for sale. Took it off all over the place.
So I had planned on bringing that up.
Can we just pick them up? I mean, our public works used to go pick them up.
I believe we can, but it's probably something we need to discuss as a board about the resources and how much time we want to spend and things of that nature. But they could legally all be picked up, including the political signs, because they're placed illegally.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Just wanted to put on your radar, something we can talk about in the future. That was all of my new business. Do we need a closed session?
Yes, Mayor. Pursuant to 143-311A2, pursuant to 143-311A3 to maintain attorney-client privilege, and pursuant to 143-311A5 to discuss the potential acquisition of real property.
Do we have a motion to go in closed session? Have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're in closed session.